All right, we're on. Okay, welcome everyone to a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. This is May 16th, it is a Tuesday, but we're only meeting this afternoon. There is no meeting later this evening. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, council members, Asadrian.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Mayor Protam Katsakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Did you repeat that?
Najarian. Oh.
Sounded a little differently. Yes, here, present, accounted for.
Mayor Brotman.
All right, thank you very much. May we have your report, please?
The agenda for Tuesday, May 16th, 2023, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Wednesday, May 10, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much, and what is before us today?
Finance regarding budget study session number three, central support departments, including finance, human resources, city clerk, city attorney, management services, information technology, and city treasurer.
All right, thank you. And before we begin, in case it feels like deja vu for folks that I'm running the meeting, it's because this month I am serving as Mayor Protam. Next month, there will be another one of my colleagues, and I am serving in that role while Mayor Brotman is in Baltimore as part of a Bloomberg initiative on innovation, I believe. He had mentioned that at a previous city council meeting. So with that, Mr. Galanian, will you get us started?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam Katsakian, Member City Council. Thank you for being here this afternoon. As city clerk, right into the record, today's session is going to cover seven central support departments in the city, although smaller in size, but they are indeed the backbone of this organization and without whom none of the essential, many essential services that we provide to the community would be possible. With that, we'll delve into it. Just a quick reminder, council recently adopted four priority areas, and the departments have made every effort to select highlighted projects to directly relate to one or two of your adopted priority areas. We'll start with none other than human resources. This department is not only an internal service department, but also provides services for job applicants from outside the city organization. As far as the personnel is concerned, you see an increase in the FTE total, and that's because the safety section shifted from the liability fund under the city attorney's office to the workers' comp fund under human resources, hence, a full-time position count increase of one FTE and a net increase of hourly FTEs of .69. Department is comprised of four divisions, with bulk of the work being done through administration, which includes recruitments, compliance, labor relations, and the day-to-day operation of the department. Benefits, that covers the full range of health-related benefits. Employee health services covers the replacement regulatory exams, as well as coordination of return to work. And finally, workers' compensation that addresses employees' job-related injuries. As far as their budget concerned, the total almost remains the same year over year in 2324. There are nine funds in their budget, starting with general fund. There is a $500,000 increase. And the major items that make up this cost increase include FLSA audit, that's Fair Labor Standards Act audit, that's $95,000. Hiring of an external investigator, $400,000. Hiring of an outside council to act as a chief negotiator, that's another $100,000. Future leadership training, $40,000. And some other additional increases include liability insurance and the organic increase in salaries and benefits due to inflation, et cetera. Unemployment insurance fund, there is a $51,000 decrease due to decreasing claims. Workers' compensation insurance fund, there is a net increase of $116,000. That includes new salaries and benefits and maintenance and operation, again, due to the safety section shifting to the HR department under this fund. There's also salaries and benefits increase, again, $57,000. Contractual services, $374,000. This is offset with decrease in claims payment of 1.1 million. Dental insurance fund, small increase of $29,000 based on actuals. Medical insurance fund is actually a net decrease of $223,000 for 2324 next fiscal year. The medical premiums are based on assumptions that we anticipate. PPO going up by 10%, HMO 13%, and Kaiser 5%. However, some of the employees have already switched their plans, and this has culminated in a decrease of about $1,288,000. Vision insurance fund, there's slight increase of $15,000 based on actuals. Employee benefit funds, this includes sick leave conversions at the time of separation, $467,000. Vacation payout, $74,000, and comp time payout, $144,000. RHSP benefits fund, this is for retiree health plan. This is, again, in separation payout of $194,000. However, it's offset and decreased due to one-time transfer of $3 million from last year to the liability fund this year. Post-employment benefit funds, increase of $173,000. Major items include retiree Medicare reimbursement for $62,000. Medical benefits for deceased employees, non-sworn. And this is the benefit of their surviving family members, $60,000, and purse replacement benefit of $33,000. Going to quickly cover department's highlights. As you may recall, we have five MOUs that are going to expire June 30th of next year, 2024. And we need to begin negotiations with these five bargaining units. These negotiations are opportunities for the city and the labor groups to agree on terms and conditions of employment and to better forecast our labor costs and confirms, like I said, terms and condition of employment. And the cost will come, $100,000 will come out of the general fund. Recruitments, that's proven to be a challenge, not just for Glendale, but it's a regional, nationwide issue. The department plans on reaching a wider pool of candidates using social media and new marketing techniques to improve the recruitment experience and attract the best talent pool by implementing technological sources, resources, to improve efficiency and reduce the cycle time that it takes to hire. Human Resources Enterprise System. This is a collaborative effort between human resources and information technology departments. They'll be working together, reviewing the cities, onboarding, training, and employee evaluation process with the issuance of an RFP to identify the best solution that will increase operational efficiencies for the human resources department. And this will provide integration between systems, hence eliminating dual entry, automate the workflow process, and digitize all employee records into a centralized system. Leadership development, that's been one of my highest priorities for the HR department. They plan on including and implementing educational and training programs to coach new workforce, to prepare them to be successful leaders of the future, as well as preparing current leaders on how to balance workforce shortages and organizational needs, and, as I mentioned, the cost of $40,000. That concludes the presentation on HR department. We'll open it up to questions. Paula Adams, the department head is here, as well as her budget team, to respond to your questions.
May.
Yes. Go ahead.
Two questions. Hi, Paula. First of all, can you tell me what the proposed additional personnel is? You have one in your personnel for the proposed, is one more full-time?
Right, so that employee already works for the city of Glendale, but they were with the city attorney's office last budget cycle. It is the safety administrator. And that safety administrator is now being moved to the HR department.
And is that salary about the same?
The salary of the safety administrator is actually a little higher than what the person is earning today. And so there is a little bit of salary savings in there.
Okay. Second, I mentioned that you will be shortening the cycle time to hire. What is the time, and how do you plan on shortening that?
Okay, so today, our average cycle time to hire is about 141 days. In the industry and municipal government, we should be able to get that down to between 90 to 120 days. Some of the biggest issues that have impacted our cycle time was that we had some vacancies in HR and our recruitment section, and it took us a little bit longer even to fill our own vacancies. So we've recently filled two chairs added to our recruitment team. As soon as we get those parties trained up, we should be able to meet the industry standard of 90 to 120 days, cycle time to hire.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Brasatian.
Is there something baked in already for communications? I know this is something we made as a priority. Is there a specific, you know, given that it's not just an internal, it's also external, and we are having difficulty filling the positions, is there a position or a fund that's been created within this budget to allocate some of that to marketing and outreach?
Well, today, we have a small contract with a marketing specialist who is working with us on branding our bulletins differently, making them more attractive so that we get the clicks to apply. That contract is so small, it didn't rise to the level of having to come to this body for approval. So we're starting there. The team is learning how to market and sell our positions better, and we have a plan to return to the field. So some of the activities to go to high schools, trade schools, community colleges, and universities was suspended during the pandemic. But now that that is over, we have a plan to get back into the field. We have a 12-month schedule, and we will get back out there and hopefully be able to bring in the talent that the city deserves.
And to add to that, Councilmember Satrian, when it comes to hiring of employees in other departments, Ms. Adams works directly with the department heads, and they have their own budget for recruitments and hiring that if we need to tap into to bolster our communication plan to hire those or recruit for those positions.
I'm kind of going to go back to something that I've said. Do you feel like you have the expertise within your department? Or do the rest of the departments that have this budget allocated, do they have the experts that know how to do it? Or is it tagged on to a different position that the person holds that's kind of doing that outreach and communication?
We know the steps to recruit. We know the process. What we're not good at, and where we have, we need to elevate our skills, is how to market and sell the opportunity. And so I don't think that that full breadth of talent rests in the division right now. But we can partner with management services, the police department, the fire department, those departments that do have communications experts, and they will help us get to where we need to be. We've already begun some of those conversations.
And again, most of the marketing will be done in those respective departments with their own staff, with the help of Ms. Adams and her staff. And like Paula mentioned, the push is to use technology, to use apps and cell phones as opposed to emails and printed material. So that's the direction we're moving forward.
Which leads me to my second question. I wasn't sure if I should be bringing this up here or under IT. But again, part of this, you know, creating efficient structures and the communication aspect of it, is there funds available for us to not just? I recognize that there was something in your presentation about doing the analysis for it. Do we have funding in the current budget that you're proposing that allows for them to go beyond just analysis, but also purchase the needed technology to take us to the next level, whether it's for HR or for any of the other internal and external communications?
Councilmember Satrian, currently, we are not asking for appropriation. We want to wait and see the results of the analysis that will dictate to us which kinds of programs, which kinds of technologies we can use, and at what cost. And at any time, we can bring that to council for approval and appropriation. That's the second step in this process.
Okay. I think this is off of Councilmember Divine's comments. I know one of the things we talked about was, you know, some changes to our hiring and, you know, accountability measures that we put into place as part of this upcoming year. Does that also include, like, switching over from the top-three rule to the banding rule? Do you have that?
So a review of the civil service rules is in order. Some of the rules are tied to the charter, others are not. So we're focusing on those rules that don't require a charter change first. I would, you know, it would be ideal to get to a change in the rule of three whole scores, but that's not where we're starting. But the process to review the rules has already begun, and I think I'll be giving a briefing on that here soon.
Okay. And I have one last one, Mayor. I think it was sometime last year, we talked about insurance, and I had requested to put out an RFP, and I know you guys are going through that process now. The budget you're proposing that covers those, is that for our current system? And what are we doing to help mitigate the gap that was kind of covered at the end of last year? But we saw a significant increase in insurance costs. So are we still working with the same vendor and broker? Are we working through to get a different process in place?
So our broker of record has not changed. We are in open enrollment right now. That open enrollment closes on Monday. We are collaborating with all of the key stakeholders from all of our unions, finance, management services. We have been hearing information on some structural changes and deliberating about that information. We have one more data set that needs to arrive before we can make some recommendations to the city manager for his consideration. But we have been working on this process collectively and collaborating together, four months now.
I think the only comment I'll leave with, if, as we're working through the budget, and by the end of it, if there are shifts that need to be made to make sure that we have the funding available for the departments, for the communication and IT, that's where I'll leave that. Thank you.
Councilmember Satrian? All right, I do not have any further questions.
I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
I just have one more follow-up.
Councilmember Divine, go ahead.
When you talk about the insurance and the research that you're doing, the data compiling, are you talking about the CalPERS medical?
Yeah, that is one of the options that we're looking at, and there are a couple of others.
Okay.
And we have a little bit more data that needs to come in before we can inform and make recommendations to the city manager for his consideration.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Protam, as a city council, we only get one bite at this apple, and we want to make sure that we do it right.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you.
Moving on, finance department. The personnel count practically stays the same at 37, and some change FTEs. There are seven divisions within this department. Accountings are responsible for financial accounting systems and controls, city's financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, or GAAP, maintaining the city's fixed assets, managing city's debt, and coordinating all external and internal financial audits. Accounts payable, obviously, responsible for accounts payable and issuing checks to vendors, filing annual reports, reviewing internal controls, and administering unclaimed check procedures. Billing and collections, responsible for city's billed receivables, project billing for public works and GLVP, and collection of city's delinquent accounts. Budget, responsible for annual budget for operating capital projects, forecasting, monitoring the city's revenue sources, such as property tax, sales tax, and utility user tax, and maintaining the citywide fee schedule. Financial applications, they provide support of the city's enterprise resource planning system and all financial modules. Payroll, obviously, processing the city's employee payroll, filing reports with taxing authorities, coordinating employee benefit coverage and reporting. And last but not least, purchasing, that's responsible for a centralized procurement of goods, materials, supplies, equipment, and services at the lowest possible cost with the highest quality. As far as their budget is concerned, they only have one fund in the budget with a 5.7% proposed increase, mainly to salaries and benefits, that's approximately $400,000. Vacation and comp time, medical insurance, purse cost, liability insurance, and ITD service charge. Department highlights, implementation of new governmental accounting standards that include GASP94. GASP stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. This GASP94 is relating to public-private and public and public partnership, and GASP96 relating to subscription-based information technology arrangements. Lot of finance speak. There is also a new requirement for how we record leases and subscriptions as expenses and revenues. And if you'd like, Mr. Bradford will be more than happy to elaborate on that after the end of this presentation. But the net impact to the city's financial position is nil. The implementation of new GASP's ensures the timely completion of the annual financial audit and provides useful financial information to the readers, and in turn, will help maintain Glendale's debt ratings that currently stand at and has been consistently rated as strong buy, investment grade, and high-grade standing. And as you can see on the slide, SMP rates the city of Glendale as AA+, Fitch AA+, and Moody's AA2. The resident access system will provide convenient and secure access to their billings and payment histories. For example, for TOT tax, for utility user tax, property damages, and other general billings. And once it's implemented, this will be combined with the recently launched and implemented permit portal at a cost of $424,000 per year that will come out of the applications fund. Budget book automation. The purpose is to use a software to automate the budget book preparation and publication process, which will improve efficiency, create innovative design and enhanced appearance, assure ADA compliance, and has the potential to scale to other departments at a cost of $30,000 for the first year. Financial forecasting platform. This would be using a software tool to readily calculate what-if scenarios and forecast the impact to the city's budget. We can also use this tool, amongst other uses, to model, for example, the drawdown of the 115 trust and the impact on the annual pension cost and unfunded liability, the cost of $22,000. That concludes the presentation on finance department. Obviously, Mr. Bradford, Ms. Sarian, and their team are available to respond to your questions.
All right, who has questions? Okay, Karen, we can move on.
All right, moving on to information technology. There is, as far as personnel counts concerned, two and a half FTE increase in their count. Hourlies, these are one, to work on data analytics. Half of an FTE to help network team, and another one to work on RFPs, conduct outreach, coordinate department customer service, and lead the enterprise implementations. The application, the two divisions within this department, application divisions consist of project management, GIS, content and document management. of project management, GIS, content and document management system, application support for departments, and software license maintenance, vendor management for over 100 software systems. Infrastructure, responsible for desktop support and help desk, server infrastructure, network services, cybersecurity, contract management, and procurement. As for their budget, there is a decrease of 10%, just over 10%. They have two funds in their budget. Infrastructure fund, there's a $507,000 increase. Salaries and benefits, $112,000. Contractual services, $739,000. That includes three new contracts, $150,000 for data center study, $120,000 for Microsoft Azure Services, $120,000 for Microsoft Cloud Migration. New computer hardware, $61,000. Liability insurance, $90,000. This is offset by decreases of $455,000 in removal of projects that we had last year. Applications fund, there is a $1.5 million decrease. Starts with a $2.4 million decrease in ITD, Information Technology Department service charge year over year. It's primarily the majority of the decrease, offset by increases in salaries and benefits for $600,000, approximately $285,000 for five new projects. My apologies, $590,000 for five new projects that we're requesting appropriation. Departmental highlights, service requests and inventory management system. Our IT department's working on this project to consolidate the city's internal service requests such as legal, facilities, help desk, and inventory management system to increase efficiency in managing employee and department technology assets for a cost of $400,000 that will come out of applications fund. Network expansion and replacement includes installation of new antennas on city radio sites, expansion of access point for better coverage, and subscription to network security features to improve security stature. This will provide new wireless high-speed internet connection to key city locations, new network capabilities with advanced security features, and connectivity in public spaces that are not currently serviced. This will cost $150,000, come out of the infrastructure fund. The public community room audiovisual standardized systems. The work includes analysis to standardize these rooms for consistent user experience, and this will create a standardized IT support model to improve efficiency and ease of use. Cost of $100,000 out of infrastructure fund. And lastly, this has been a major concern nationwide, IT security enhancement initiatives. The plan is to enhance or add security products to minimize this risk and subscribe to a security operation firm to provide 24/7 support. Values I'll bring will enhance email security, electronic document protection, backup and disaster recovery plan to ensure business continuity in the event of a security breach, breach or natural disaster. And the funds will come out of infrastructure fund. That concludes the Finance Department's presentation.
Councilmember Divine.
Not Finance.
Sorry. I teed.
Councilmember Divine.
Good? We good? Okay. Can you explain, identify an enterprise solution? What does that mean? For those of us that are not familiar with.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Divine.
Which 26?
Certainly. Mayor Protam, Kusakian, Mayor Divine, sorry, Councilmember Divine, members of the council. Yep, so that's just the internal organization our size. It's often referred to when we change out software. It's just, it's for the entire enterprise for this particular system. It's just a description that it would replace and consolidate multiple systems for a city our size. So, it's often referred to as an enterprise system.
Oh, I see.
It's just the size and magnitude of what we're doing.
Okay, internal logo or like a broad sense? Okay, all right. Expansion, let's see, where's that one? Expansion, key city locations for soft internet connectivity in public spaces. Is that our parks? Because I've asked for our parks to be part of, included in the internet, so our residents can go to the parks and play.
Councilmember Divine, this is, actually, this does not include the parks. The three locations that this includes is the sports complex, Duke-Majin Park, and the shooting range. This is expanding and enhancing our Wi-Fi presence. We will be taking a report to council for what you had asked for, for our parks expansion Wi-Fi early June, which will have a full report on our wireless strategic plan. This is an update of some existing old Wi-Fi technology that just, it needs a refresh to get wireless connectivity to the locations I mentioned.
Okay, but the parks, they'll be coming?
Parks is coming on June 6th, I do believe.
Great. And when it comes to security, I hope that you will continue to train all of us on, you know, phishing expedition, whatever they're called, and the hacking that goes on so that we are up to speed on what the latest method is.
Yeah, Councilmember Divine, members of the council, absolutely. We include it in our budget every year. As email is one of the biggest attack vectors to organizations, we do a phishing training, testing campaign on an annual basis. We think it's vital as part of any good security, cybersecurity program.
Absolutely. Thank you. You have a big job.
Cybersecurity is often my 3:00 AM thought.
Thank you.
Councilmember Najari, and then Councilmember Osotia.
Yeah, I'd like to just follow up on the cybersecurity. You know, LA Unified and San Bernardino County Sheriff's, I think it was San Bernardino, they all got hacked, they all got shut down. What can we do to prevent that? And what can we do in terms of a backup? Let's say they got in and they, you know, cemented, concreted, bricked our system. Do we have, we used to have backup with City of Burbank for data. I'm not sure about applications as well, but assuming they get through our first line of defense, how quick can we rebuild if necessary?
Councilmember Najari, members of the council, so I think there's a two-part question. As far as preventing it from happening, say, I think City of Oakland was recently compromised and other agencies that you mentioned, and I think it would be disingenuous for any IT director to say it would be impossible, but we'd take great lengths to prevent as much as possible. We have four basic security tenants. We aggressively patch whenever there's a known exploit. We segment, we get rid of user default accounts and passwords. Those are the kind of core tenants of any basic enterprise cybersecurity platform. Regrettably, those agencies probably didn't do it. I can tell you, the City of Oakland, they had something they shouldn't have been running, and it wasn't patched, and that's why they're the only ones that got compromised by that exploit, regrettably. So, we certainly have a lot of layers, and I certainly, I'm not going to get too deep into the, of what we deploy for obvious reasons, but suffice to say, we layer in our controls where we prevent to the extent possible. We have detective controls to the extent possible, and then if we, heaven forbid, we can isolate and insulate our city networks and data, we have those controls built in in our cybersecurity platform. To answer your second question regarding our ability to recover, again, without getting too far into the specifics, we do have the ability to recover in an alternate data site within the city, and we are also leveraging the Microsoft Azure Cloud appropriate so we can restore critical city services. In other critical systems, we do contract with the vendor directly to provide a recovery services via an internet-connected device.
Okay. I don't want to ask any more questions because, you know, we don't want to reveal our defense system, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Najari. Councilmember Osotia.
Can you walk me through how Innovation Department works with IT and where the funding is merged? Because I know that Innovation Department attempts to bring in new ideas to make these different systems function better. Don't have much of a background to know whether I should be asking these questions under IT or Innovation.
Councilmember Kusakian, our Innovation and Performance Team, as part of the city manager's office, works directly, as you noted, with our IT department, but as well as, for the lack of a better term, provide consulting services to various department and to increase their efficiency, streamline processes, and as far as the use of technology is concerned, that then coordinates those concepts and ideas with IT Department for implementation. The budget is spread amongst different departments, including in the city managers as well as other departments who seek out those improvements and efficiencies and then work with our Innovation Team as well as the IT group. So, there is really not specific budget set aside for that function.
In the course of the, at least last nine months, we've talked about, quite a bit about bringing in different kind of applications that have all these tools baked in, that we wouldn't need to recreate the wheel because it would actually end up costing us more money, and we would never be able to get there if we were trying to do it ourselves. The budget that you're proposing, whether it's systems that allow us to communicate externally and then be able to use systems that allow the different departments to connect and whatnot, is that in the budget?
Councilmember Kusakian, not specifically, not in this budget as proposed. Again, based on the collaboration and analysis of all of these needs and, for example, communication, that's a larger conversation, and it's multifaceted and involves a lot of departments. We haven't been able to put together numbers at this point, but we need to put our heads together and come up with a plan, and then cost it out, and then we'll bring it to council for approval and appropriation when the time comes.
Okay. I think, which leads me to the, if the parks is coming on June 6th, and we're still going through the budget process, is that going to be brought to us for us to be able to allocate funding for that? Or it's going to have to wait until next year?
Allocate funding for?
For us to be able to have internet at the parks, per Councilmember Divines.
Councilmember Kusakian, members of the council, that will be, depending on council direction we receive on the 6th, we can incorporate that into the 2324 budget, depending on the direction and approval we receive at the council for funding. We have put in a placeholder, if you will, in the five-year forecast for CIP, which this is what this would fall under in the out years. Without getting again too far into the, to the report we're going to bring to the council on the 6th, it is going to take a couple of years to deploy the Wi-Fi for a variety of reasons, so we're going to have to phase it in over a couple of years, and it is dependent on the completion of GWP's fiber backbone, which will be completed towards the end of this calendar year. So, a lot more to come on that discussion, but it's a little bit of a long way to say, yes, it'll be, depending again on the council approval we receive on the 6th, we can include it in the 2324 budget.
Okay, thank you.
All right. A lot of the questions I had were already answered in terms of cybersecurity. Internally, I just, one question I have is, in the past, it was cities' practice to have services that were provided by the Information Technologies Department or IT Department to other city departments to have that calculated and kept track of. Do we still do that? Is that a practice that exists?
Mayor Protam, Kusakian, members of the council, absolutely. We are rate-based. We are an internal service department, so every dollar allocated in these funds are charged back through a formal IT service charge to all other city funds that receive said services. Roughly, on average, about 65% of what we spend goes to the general fund. 20% winds up in GWP, and the remaining of our costs are allocated against, amongst the other enterprise funds.
Okay. But I would like to see departmentally who is utilizing the services of the IT Department the most and how that tracks over the years, whether there's been shifts and one department has had more need for services. And I understand that that will fluctuate depending on programs that are rolled out. I'm sure community development right now is probably taking up a lot of those resources based on the implementation of their new digital plan submission and tracking system and portal, but I'd still like to see that. Thank you. And those are my questions for this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on, City Clerk's Office. As far as personnel concerned, there's a slight decrease in part-time staff hours. They have, the City Clerk's Office has four cost centers and services that provide, includes agenda management system for city council, housing authority, and CSW meetings, minutes and records management, regulations relating to the Fair Political Practice Commission for the city, election services, assisting candidates with filing of election documents and verification of signatures, coordinating with LA County Registrar/Recorders Office for various election-related activities, community outreach, education, maintaining glendalevotes.org website, records management, overseeing public records request for the city. And last but not least, commission on the status of women, assisting the Chair of CSW with agenda setting, managing all the ad hoc committees, managing grants, reports, legislative updates, and platforms for the commission, and communication with council and the public. City Clerk's Office has one fund, general fund, with an increase of 23.8%. That's only $294,000, but in the current year, we redirected a vacant administrative analyst position to, from the city manager's office to the city clerk's office to oversee the commission on status of women amongst other duties, and that resulted in a approximately $200,000 increase in salaries and benefits and maintenance and operations, plus a, an adjustment on, for their existing employees and salaries and benefits of $50,000. Departmental highlights, commission on the status of women is in the process of publishing a new report on the status of women in Glendale relating to health, employment, education, and income. This is in conjunction with a new strategic plan that they're working on to assess policy recommendations to council and outreach efforts to raise awareness of issues facing women in the city. Mina checkbox and Armenian subcategory. The plan is to advocate for LA County Board of Supervisors and others for support, collaborate with leading community organizations, and assist community partners with a survey, report, and education. The values that it will bring, this effort will bring is acquiring more accurate and meaningful data on the population of Glendale in the 2030 census, raising awareness of opportunity gaps for Glendale populations that have been previously invisible in federal, state, and local data. And an accurate count will ultimately bring more resources, including financial, to address the needs of all residents of the city, as well as specific resources for under the needs of all residents of the city, as well as specific resources for underserved populations. That brings me to the end of presentation for the City Clerk's Office.
Any questions?
Clerk of Bajin's available to respond to your questions.
Councilmember Al-Sadrion, and then Councilmember Devine.
The $200,000 that you noted, is that specifically for a staffer for the Commission on the Status of Women, or is that person going to have other obligations?
I'm going to let Suzy Bajin.
Yes, we're in the process of hiring an analyst who will work 50% of the time on the Commission on the Status of Women, and the rest of the position will address special projects in the City Clerk's Office and also regular day-to-day operations of the City Clerks.
Okay. I know that the strategic plan is coming to us in a couple of weeks, and so we'll have an opportunity to discuss this further, but there was a time that I remember Lana Hadad and Christine Powers were the full-time staffers for the Commission on the Status of Women. Is that 50% time allocation enough for, because I haven't seen the strategic plan yet and, you know, I know we're going to talk about it, is that sufficient?
Well, it depends on the direction that the Council gives the Commission and how often the Commission meets. Currently, the Commission meets quarterly, and so if that were to increase and the Commission were to meet more often, then we would need more staff hours to accommodate that.
Yes, Councilmember Satrian, we scaled back the number of meetings from monthly to quarterly.
Right. And I remember that there was like different kinds of programming back then that we don't have any longer, so we'll be able to have this discussion further during the strategic plan discussion and then...
Most definitely.
Configure it then? Okay. And then I think the last item is, for me, elections-related. You know, I recognize that, you know, we're now with like the county, but the kind of outreach that needs to be done to educate our public so Glendale elections are not lost on that long ballot, is there anything that's missing from here that you feel like is needed in that area? There's an election coming up in 2024, so...
Yes. I think it would be great to have a staff member who is dedicated to communications with the public. I think that could, you know, be addressed perhaps with the analyst position, but we really do need a lot of staffing just to run the day-to-day operations of the Clerk's Office. So it would be great to perhaps have an hourly or contract out some of those services to, or have a staff person to address the larger outreach, and whether it's social media or community meetings, et cetera.
How are you handling translations right now? Because I know you're facing with the public for...
Right now, the translations are through the graphics department, so we submit our translation, whatever documents that we need translated, including social media posts, we have to submit it to the graphics department, and it takes several days for the translations to take place. And if we need, we also need oftentimes graphic assistance, and so that adds to the time as well. So it could take, sometimes, translation plus graphic assistance could take anywhere from a week or over a week, two weeks, to two weeks.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Devine?
My questions are about the Commission on the Status of Women. Did you say that $200,000 was for that analyst? Is that what we're proposing? You're proposing?
Yes, Councilmember Devine, that includes salaries and benefits.
Okay. All right. And none of that is being taken out of the reserve that the Commission has?
No.
Okay. The analysts, what exactly, are they going to be running the meetings? Is that what the analyst is going to be doing, or what's the exact job description?
Previously, the position was filled with Christine Powers, and so she would work with the Commission Chair to set the agendas, to work on different projects. For example, the report on the status of women needs to be reviewed. It's in collaboration, it's done in collaboration with Mount St. Mary's University, and the staff member would have helped overlook that, but our, my staff and myself have been taking over those operations until we are able to hire somebody, and we're in the process of doing that. So also, running the ad hoc committees, doing community outreach, et cetera.
Kind of community outreach?
I'm sorry?
What kind of community outreach does the Commission do these days?
We just assumed the Commission responsibilities, so any, anything that the Commission would like to do in terms of working on different projects throughout the community that impacts women, the ad hoc committees would be working on those issues, and so we need a staff member present at those meetings and guiding the meetings, also making the connections with community partners.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Najarian?
Yeah, just so I'm clear, the Commission on the Status of Women has the highest staffing cost than any of our other Commissions? Is that what I'm hearing, or?
Councilmember Najarian, that's a good question. I don't believe it has the highest.
Let me, from my understanding, the addition of the staff person would be not just for the Commission on the Status of Women, right? About half of the time would be spent on Commission on the Status of Women, the rest of the time would be spent on general City Clerk office duties. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
And Mayor Protem, Satrian, members of City Council, we are not requesting an addition of, to the head count. That's already been transferred. It was a vacant position in the City Manager's Office. We shifted the Commission on the Status of Women from City Manager's Office responsibly to City Clerk, and with that came that position. Half the time intended to deal with affairs of the Commission and the rest, affairs of the City Clerk.
Yeah. Okay. So before I vote on this budget in the future, I'd like to know the, in each Commission, what the staffing costs are.
We can get that for you as part of our wrap-up.
Oftentimes, we perhaps, without thinking, say, oh, let's create a Commission. And I think a few have been proposed that haven't gone anywhere, without realizing the full staffing burden on that, and whether it's, I know a lot of it is done, I'm just thinking to the TPC, a lot of it is done after hours, overtime, by Public Works Director and the Public Works Attorney. I mean, if you, I don't want something extremely detailed, but generally, we've got, what, 15 Commissions or...
Correct. 13. 13 or 14, yeah.
And what sort of staffing needs does each one?
Yeah, understood, Councilmember Najarian. Most of the time, those costs are absorbed by existing staff.
Right.
In this case, the City Clerk didn't have sufficient capacity in their current staffing levels to be able to take on this new responsibility, and that's why we transferred, redirected one position, vacant position, to the City Clerk's operation, but we can get that information.
Yeah. I mean, something like the audit, hardly me. Building, fire, and safety, I don't think has a high level of staffing. Others, civil service, I'm sure is a much higher need. So if I could get that information just to digest it and get a...
Councilmember Najarian, if I may, I know that there was a senior executive analyst position that was taking care of the Commission on the Status of Women, and currently, the position that we're hiring is an administrative analyst, so it's actually a cost savings measure. And additionally, the City Clerk has never assumed responsibilities for Commissions prior to this, I don't think. So this is something that I decided to take on as a service to the city because there was a need, and so, and we appreciate the additional staffing as we are short-staffed currently.
Yeah, no, don't get me wrong. I'm not, I'm not saying this with a focus on your budget or your department, but just in general, across the Commissions.
It's a point well made, Councilmember Najarian. I think that it's something I would like to see as well, to see what the costs are with each Commission, associated staffing costs and whatever else. In general, it gives us an idea and perhaps may control our appetites for adding even more Commissions or Boards down the line.
Thank you for that.
Perhaps, I said.
Mayor Protem? We just wanted to clarify one thing before we move on to this.
Mayor Protem, members of the Council, I think there's a confusion on the number for the salaries and benefits. It's actually $127,000 for this position to be shifted, not 200. The $76,000 that's in there is for MNO costs that are budgeted in that.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify that. It's not 200,000.
That's good. Good.
200,000 is a total.
Total increase.
Salaries and benefits and MNO.
Exactly.
My question is in regard to, if my colleagues, any other questions for the City Clerk's Office? So in terms of, on slide 32 where it said personnel full-time is seven plus 1.56, and that's the current, or is that what it would be in the proposed with the addition of this additional position?
Mayor Protem Satrian, the proposed 2324 personnel is, includes that position we just discussed. It was already redirected in the previous year, so we're not asking for appropriation or approval of a new position in the next year's budget.
So, based on that, what the slide is on the screen of the seven full-time personnel plus one at .5 full-time equivalencies on an hourly basis, does that mean that currently, even though it says 8.56, there's actually only seven bodies in the City Clerk's Department? Does that mean that they're, okay.
Full-time, yes.
All right. That's all I wanted to clarify. Thank you. And you guys can, like, just, don't go bother saying Mayor Protem every time. You can just address this all to City Council. I feel like we go through a whole roll call of Council every time, so just feel free to just call us Council and then answer the question. Thanks. That's all.
Moving on to the City Treasurer. As far as personnel, there is a minor increase due to increase in hours, part-time hourly hours offset by decrease in hourly rates. There are two main operations of this department, investments that invest idle city funds, banking relationships, that the work entails negotiating contracts with the banks on an annual basis. City Treasurer's budget practically unchanged. There is one fund, general fund in that budget, increase of $40,000 primarily due to salaries and purse cost, and there is an actually $37,000 decrease due to a downward reallocation of a vacant position, $13,000 in vacations, workers' comp, medical costs, et cetera, and liability insurance of $14,000. Departmental highlights, management of the city's investment portfolio. This is the bread and butter of that department. They achieve this by monitoring market trends and looking for investment opportunities to implement the best strategies while adhering to the city's investment goals of safety, liquidity, and yield. And this will protect principal investment and optimizes yields in accordance with City Council's policy. Incidentally, the portfolio total currently is over $1 billion. Payment Card Industry Data Security Standards, or PCI DSS, is a continued effort in coordinating with the city's PCI team and qualified security assessor to educate all department merchant locations, card payment environment, enforce the policies and procedures, and collect documents to demonstrate compliance. This will protect customers' payment card data, reduce risk of data breach, maintain favorable merchant rates, and prevent payment card fines and reputational risk. And just as a note, the number of credit card transactions in '22 totaled over 715,000 Mr. Menukian, or as we call him affectionately, Mr. Moneybags, is available to respond to your questions.
Go ahead, Councilmember Devine.
Thank you. This one is for our City Treasurer. Page 42, we discussed this before, so I just need more explanation. To monitor market trends and look for investment opportunities to implement the best portfolio strategies. Now, it's come to my attention that Treasury bills are now paying 5.29%. What are we making on our investments?
We're, we are at about 2.7%.
Okay. And so my question is, and then if we, going out to January 2024, we can get 4.42%, going out to 2025, 4.08%, and so the money is just coming, we're rolling it over. Can you tell me why we don't invest in something like this to get our percentage up, interest up?
Thank you, Councilmembers, and Councilmember Devine. We use a laddering strategy for our portfolio, and we try to spread out the investment over five years. Currently, we're investing for the period of May 2028. The investments that were invested that are May 2023, May, April, June, they were invested five years ago, so it's not, we're not investing in the short term currently. However, we do have some liquid funds that we could invest. However, as you saw in our priorities, liquidity is our priority as well, and we do need to meet certain obligations such as a payment that is coming up in July of approximately $56 to $60 million that we need to meet, and we need to make sure that we have enough liquidity to meet that expenditure. So we generally invest on a monthly basis in a five-year period because the short term we're already invested a number of years ago. And if you remember, for the longest period of time, the interest rates for the investments for the Treasuries were approximately 0%. So during that time, we were still earning 1.4% on our investment because of the strategy that we've been using over the past so many years. But that doesn't mean that we can't currently also invest some small amount in Treasuries on a one-month or two-month basis, but if we do, we're locking that money in. If we need it, we will not be able to access it until it matures.
I see. Okay. So then what you're saying is that that would not be a good strategy for us to invest in these Treasury bills?
The strategy is for the whole portfolio. It's not for the short term, one month or two months. We have a strategy of laddering for the whole portfolio, which is five years, and we invest on a monthly basis, and the investments that are one month and two months were invested five years ago.
Okay.
So, but we can still invest some of the funds in the short term if you feel, if the Council feels that we should lock that money in over the next one or two months instead of keeping it in liquid assets.
Yeah.
Liquid assets, I mean, we're earning approximately over 3% on it. They are in State of California Local Agency Investment Fund, so it's not like idle funds that are, that are sitting there not earning any, any interest. And the benefit of keeping it in State of California Local Agency Investment Fund is that if we need to access it, we can access it tomorrow, so we're not locked in over whatever period of time that we can buy the treasuries for.
Okay.
That is the benefit of putting it in State of California Local Agency Investment Fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Treasurer Menukian?
Okay. City Attorney's Office, next. Personnel, there is a decrease of two, just over two FTEs, as I mentioned during the HR Department's presentation. The Safety Section shifted to the Workers' Compensation Fund. Therefore, there's a reduction of one full-time position and almost another one-point FTE decrease. Department has two major divisions, Departmental Services, responsible for day-to-day advice and transactional assistance to City Council, its executive team, and city departments, and they prosecute violations of the Glendale Muni Code, liability and risk management. They defend litigations filed against the city and its officers and employees.
They defend litigations filed against the city and its officers and employees, investigate and review claims for damages, and manage city's insurance program. City attorney's budget consists of two funds. In general fund, there is a increase of 243,000. That includes 147,000 in salaries and benefits, and another 91,000 in liability insurance. In the liability insurance fund, 2.4 million dollar increase. This is primarily due excess insurance premium going up to by 2.9 million, and addition of a claims analysis position during last year's budget at a tune of 137,000 total cost. And that's offset by decreases in salaries and benefits and MNO, again, due to that safety section shifting to HR department. Departmental highlights include council districts transition process. In last year's budget, there was $55,000 that was appropriated for the demographer. And in the current funding for in fiscal year 2324 for this process will consist of staff time and transition from at-large to district-based council member elections. This will be done through charter amendments and through extensive public outreach, including public hearings and workshops, and will also likely reduce the cost of running for city council and may give minority candidates a better opportunity to be elected within each district. And this process will be funded by the department's general fund. Conducting review of contract and insurance terms to analyze requirements of comparable jurisdictions. This will ensure best practices for protecting the city's interests and facilitate an effective and efficient contractual services processes. The funds will come out of general fund and liability insurance fund. Obtaining final ROPS approval. If you, if you recall, ROPS stands for recognized obligation payment schedule. This is from the redevelopment agency days. This will be done by restructuring the last remaining enforceable obligation contract and resubmitting the last and final for the Department of Finance approval, which will hopefully free up $10.4 million in redevelopment bond proceeds to be used for the Central Park Development Project. And the restrictions with this bond was because it had to be used within the scope of the original bond, which was improvements in the downtown area.
Okay.
That, question answers.
Any of my colleagues have questions?
Actually, yeah.
Go ahead, council member Satrian, and then council member Najarian.
How much has staffing increased in the last five years, 10 years in the city attorney's office? Do we have numbers?
Or has it remained the same as operations have grown?
It's remained the same or slightly decreased.
Okay. The numbers that are in there, do they also average when we get outside counsel? Because it feels like, you know, from time to time, we, we bring in outside counsel on top of the attorneys we have. And I'd like to see how that evens out at the end. Like, is it, is it better that we decrease staff and increase our outsourcing of this? Or is it better for us to, you know, bring on additional staff?
Councilmember Satrian, the personnel count does not include outside counsel. These are city employees. For the next part of the question, I'll refer to Mr. Garcia.
Councilmember Satrian, we can, we certainly keep track of how much, what our expenditures are for outside counsel. I probably would have to update it for the last half of this fiscal year probably, and then we could provide that to the council. Generally speaking, we retain outside counsel for one of very discrete reasons. One, either the workload issue. We've had cases where we can handle inside, meaning we have expertise, but the case is going to take too much of an attorney's time. And just by, for example, you're aware of a case we have where the litigant litigates every single issue. We've had to, we had to retain outside counsel just for the purpose of having to handle it. Another, another reason we do is for expertise. Perhaps we don't have the expertise in our office to handle it. A third, there might be a conflict. So those are the very specific reasons why we do it. It's not, it's not necessarily to, because we can't handle the particular matter in-house. It's for one of those discrete reasons. But certainly, I, we have the information going back a number of years. I need to update it probably for the last half fiscal year, and we can provide that information to the council.
Yeah, so I'd like to see maybe at least the last five years, what the staffing change has been, and what the final number has looked like with respect to hiring outside counsel.
We can certainly provide that information.
Okay. Councilmember Najarian, I'm sorry, were you done?
Yes, please.
Okay, yes. Councilmember Najarian.
Can you tell us how the liability fund works? Do we, I don't even know if that's in your department.
It is. The liability fund is the workers' comp. Liability fund is in human resources.
So do we replenish it each year to get to a certain level? Or do we wait till it drops down and then, you know, perhaps less than every year or more than every year?
Councilmember Najarian, members of the council, we analyze it every year when we do the budget, and it's rate-based. As it's typical with insurance, we pool it. So all of the city's insurance is pooled as far as liability, general liability. So it's one rate charged citywide as a percent of payroll. We analyze it with Mike's, Mr. Garcia's office, and we adjust the rate on an annual basis. That's then charged out. So there's a, there's a liability service charge, liability insurance service charge fund in each departmental budget. And that swept, that revenue is brought into the liability fund to pay the excess premium, insurances, and the, and the claim payouts. So we do have a rolling five-year forecast we look at, and we try to keep it, we try to set enough, enough funds aside to make sure we have enough set aside for the future claims that we've recorded as far as the future liabilities.
So is this the self-insured retention amount you're talking about, or just the insurance premium for the?
I believe it's both, yeah.
It's both.
So yeah, we have the premiums, and then we estimate what we assess a claim may be, whether with the, if there's going to be an estimated payout, or if there's going to be attorney's fees we might be on the hook on. And then we make sure our number matches up with the number that they've set aside.
I see, okay. All right, thank you.
To add to that, as an example, last year, the current year, the rate's five and a half percent. But as a part of the proposed 2324 budget, the rate is being proposed at eight and a half percent to keep the fund healthy.
And certain departments are charged a greater?
All departments are charged eight and a half percent of.
Regardless.
Regardless.
Based on the ways, though, so.
Yeah, based on the percent of payroll. So again, it's pooled. So that's a flat rate. So if there's a headcount, it's applied as a percent of payroll to collect the revenue into the fund.
Okay, is that equitable, you think? In light of the fact, certain departments have more risk in their operations than others?
There are a couple of ways to do it, but it's not uncommon to pool the risk because that is, that is a concern because it could be disproportionately depending on the nature of the claim. So when, to basically share the risk, we, we pool the rate.
Okay. Okay, it seems that some of our, some of our departments, let me just throw out GWP, let's say. We've got a lot of trucks going on. We've got a lot of electrical supply issues, water supply. Would we consider creating a surcharge on their reimbursement to these funds, just out of equity compared to, let's say, I don't know, the IT department, or the treasury, treasurer's department, where, you know, unless they drop the portfolio from the second floor on someone's head, there's not going to be an, an issue.
Right. We could certainly take a look at that, to see if it, it makes sense to do that. I think you bring up a good point with the utility as an example, given just the, the amount of risk that that fund could have relative to say that treasurer's office or IT department, et cetera. But we can certainly investigate that.
Certain departments are better positioned to pay such a surcharge.
But they naturally pay higher because they have a higher employee count and higher salaries and benefits. So the proportion that's going out to GWP based on their rate is also.
So even that, maybe we can look at that. Do you get what I'm saying? Sort, we can talk offline.
Yes, yes.
We'll talk offline on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Satrian.
Do you have, how do you keep track of the hours for your attorneys? Is there, is there a system in place like any law firm you would have for like billable hours? Are you able to track how much time is being spent on cases or whatnot?
Councilmember Satrian, so with respect to litigation, so with both attorneys, they're, they're not billing. You know, I would say that part of the trade-off working company in the public sector is no longer having to bill, right, Mr. Najarian? So, but we do track, for example, on the transactional side, we will, or advisory side, we have legal services requests. So we track how much work is getting done, and a portion of work amongst the attorneys using that system. And then litigation, in terms of the, the litigators, again, it's, there's no billable. We manage it by, by caseload. And because it's a relatively small operation, we have two full-time litigators plus their supervisor, we're able to kind of manage it and assess the workload and assess whether or not they're, if we need to outsource work because we're too busy or whatnot. But we don't have a specific hourly billing rate that we, is charged to the departments, for example.
Okay, maybe we can also have this conversation offline. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Devine, no? Okay. So actually, on that point, which is a point I've raised before, I understand the need that for tracking time in the private sector for attorneys is for billing purposes. But I think for public sector purposes, it would be to be able to track where the time spent is most, I guess, brings most value to the city and to the city operations. So in that regard, I think it is important for something to consider, just as if IT is able to track where its staff is spending most of its time in the city in terms of departments and operations, it would be, I think, valuable to know where the attorneys are in the city spending their time. And subsequently, to be able to track which projects are the ones that take up the most time, which types of cases are taking up the most time, and in that way have the statistics and information so we can perhaps have greater efficiencies in the use of either outside legal counsel, using our own attorneys, hiring more attorneys. So that is something I'd like to see implemented in the city attorney's office, and like to have a discussion about that.
Happy to have a discussion with the city manager's office. So we've can, we certainly looked at different forms of, you know, either use the key performance indicators or some other mechanism to assess the quantity, I guess is what you're talking about, of work through your departments. We think we have a pretty good handle on it, having the model that we use with attorneys assigned to individual departments, and then using the legal services request. But we'll certainly follow up and have a, have a follow-up discussion about it.
Okay. I mean, it is something I'd like, I'd like to see because I understand that internally you may feel like you have a good grasp on it, but externally, at least to the council, feels that, and this goes for a lot of departments, things happen within a black box that we're not very clear about until it comes to the budget study sessions. And even now, when we're having these discussions where it's supposed to be us reviewing the staff's proposed budget to us in order to have balanced city budget, you know, one of the things that naturally occurs is that we start thinking about departments, which we don't have the opportunity to necessarily do, or think about departments holistically during the rest of the year. So obviously, we will make suggestions, we'll come up with ideas, we'll ask questions that may not be specific to the approval of the budget that you've proposed, but have implications operationally. And it's something I'd like to have discussed.
Understood.
Thank you.
Next. There are no other questions. We'll move on to the last internal support services department, management services. There is a slight decrease in the hourly FTEs from year to year. The department consists of six operational functions. We provide support to the mayor and city council, coordinate and oversee activities for all 13 departments. Our communication and media relation team oversees the dissemination of information to the public through various media platforms such as the city's government access channel, city's website, and social media platforms. This section also houses our TV production team and our in-house printing and graphics team, as well as filming operation and special events. Our legislative affairs staff works with state and federal legislators to promote the city's projects and priorities. Our innovation and performance team focuses on improving operations, participates in innovation programs such as, as you mentioned, Bloomberg City Data Alliance, and builds data dashboards to help departments track important activities. The Office of Sustainability is housed in this department as well, and provides staff support to the Sustainability Commission, and works on new ordinances and various initiatives. And finally, the Internal Audit Division conducts operational audits of city's operations, programs, and serves as staff support to the city audit committee. The budget for management services in the general fund, there is a 2.2% increase in the general fund, net increase of 158,000. Increases are due to salaries and benefits, approximately 160,000. IT service charge, 53,000. This is offset by decreases in 80,000. As we discussed, 80,000 is in the cost center, MNO budget that was moved to city clerk's office, building maintenance charge, another decrease of 36,000. The other cable access fund, that's due to the decrease of 50,000 due to no request for new appropriation this year. Departmental highlights, Civic Services Institute was created to educate residents about local government. The first one was attended by 17 residents over eight sessions. And due to high demand, a second cohort of 20 participants is being organized. This is to increase, increase trust in local government, educate residents about city hall, inspire attendance to apply for, attendees, excuse me, to apply for boards and commissions. And we've seen a real-life experience recruit potential local job applicants. Community satisfaction survey. Prior to the pandemic, we, we used to solicit community input through a survey approximately once every three years, the last one being in 2018. We plan on hiring a company to conduct a community satisfaction survey where we ask our community members to, to rank areas that are most important to them and ask them how satisfied they are with city services. The, the cost is approximately $30,000. That will come out of the general fund for management services. Sustainability initiatives that include outreach for electric landscape equipment program. This is for next fiscal year, installation of a pilot composting system at Lower Shoal Canyon Park and Donsmore Park, as well as safety element, adding safety element to the climate action and adaptation plan. The intent is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, increase compliance with new regulations, increase waste diversion from landfills, and compost production for approximately 50 families at city parks. Again, council districting process, this is in collaboration with the city attorney's office, will be quite a large undertaking. The city manager's office involvement will be in providing project management support for this effort and hiring a consultant to conduct extensive community outreach and education, and a demographer to analyze and produce the necessary maps. The total cost, total cost will be 150,000 for outreach and 55,000 for the demographer. That concludes the management services, as well as today's budget study session presentation. Open it up. Open it up for questions related to Management Services operation and any of the other departments that we covered, just in case. Thank you.
Who would like to, any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Asatran.
So I, I think my comment's overarching. I think as we're going through the budget session, I'm not, I'm seeing a lot of like community outreach, communications, surveys, but I'm not really seeing the allocated funding for these. I recognize that you're going through a process to figure that out, but I don't want us to come back next year and say we weren't able to meet that priority because we weren't, we didn't think through how much we need to allocate for each of these departments in that space. I raise concerns about how much we're spending on hiring consulting firms and PR firms that kind of do this cookie cutter approach. I know that staff is tired of hearing what we're, what they're doing for community outreach and engagement every time there's an issue that comes up. And I pointed out that it's, you know, I was the biggest critic coming in on this. I recognize it's not staff's fault, it's the structure, and so I'm hoping that when we go through this process, that there is a section that you can provide specifically on communications and community outreach and how that works with the different departments. I don't know if it's part of the city manager's part that you want to add in, because I see a lot of community outreach and engagement for that, but I think as we're just kind of going through each department, that's coming to mind. And what I don't want to look at next year is for us to look back at those priorities and say, hey, you know, we didn't allocate or didn't think through how much we need to allocate into this space, or at least estimate, for us to be able to get there, not just with surveys and analysis being done, but funding the meat of that outreach and communication.
Yes, Councilmember Asatran, yes, you have mentioned it several times, and as I noted before, this is a two-step process. It's not a matter of, again, we don't want to hire a consultant because we want to have this umbrella program that will dictate and provide a roadmap for various types of outreach. They're not, again, copying your statement, cookie cutter, and every department's needs and every outreach effort is different. So we need to come up with a plan, with a structure, that'll be step one, before we can come to council and ask for appropriation, to be able to put in place this new structure if approved by council. But it's not going to be forgotten, it's part of the work plan, and it's a work in progress. It's going to take some time, but it's, it's one of our priorities as well.
Okay. And then I think it kind of goes back to either even like IT and the clerk's office. I remember one of the things on the work plan included like digitizing the records that became part of the line items, for example. So I just want, you know, because I'm not hearing those like specific details in these reports, and it's kind of making me concerned, so I don't know if it's baked in somewhere, but if it is, I'd like to maybe offline get a report on, on how those things are being funded.
Sure. And again, most of the time, every department has general fund budget, and there, there is appropriation that are not specific, not, not the entirety of the fund is allocated currently. We leave a cushion for things of that nature, and if we were to provide that kind of detail at budget study sessions, instead of an hour and a half, we'll be here for 15 hours. So I'm just, in the interest of time, we just give you an overview, but I assure you, it's in progress. It will come back as a standalone report with more detail for council's consideration.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to ask that we have a conversation prior to adoption of this budget in regards to staffing for council and constituent services, something we've talked about multiple times here before. I understand when we talk about districts, that's something that needs to be approved by voters, but I think if we're talking about having some staffing to help us better serve the citizens of Glendale, and it's something that City of Pasadena has, City of West Hollywood has, City of Carson has, it's not like the model doesn't exist. I feel like we brought this up at various times, there has been support from the council to study this and look into it, and then, you know, we, it just withers or dies on the vine or, or is ignored. So I'd like us to have that discussion now, to start preparing us organizationally and structure-wise for having that model of operation, for having, and I'm not talking about a large expenditure, it could be on an hourly basis per council person, or even shared between council people. You know, two council members can share one initially, followed by one assigned specifically to whoever is serving as mayor. We may have organizational changes in the future, but I think that this is something that's important for us to have. I can tell you all, whoever is watching, whoever is here, and I know staff perhaps has heard me lament about this, that the, the volume of issues that we have to deal with on a week-to-week basis can be overwhelming. Sometimes we forget things, some things, sometimes things slip off the plate, and it's because we are trying to be everywhere at all times, all at once, and for everyone. And it's just not a sustainable model. Our neighborhoods suffer from it, constituents suffer from it, we suffer from it. And it is something that I want to insist us having a discussion about at this time. If any of my colleagues have any comments on that, I'd like to hear from them as well.
We brought this up during the work plan meeting as well, and so I join you in your concerns. I constantly feel like I'm failing in being able to reach and have the support staff for things. I also recognize, you know, there's, there's so many things that I would love to do as a council member for community outreach and engagement, but it doesn't give me the leeway. I remember when, for example, council member or former mayor Manukian had his coffees, he had staff going with him. I don't know if you had that opportunity to do that, I don't know if we've scaled back.
I've had coffees, I have not had staff at any of them.
It's, you know, how.
It'd be something nice to have.
How, you know, how staff is also engaged or, you know, having support staff for, for the outreach that we're doing and the services that we're providing, so I wholeheartedly agree with you.
Mayor Protem, Kusakamara City Council, I hear your need to, to meet your needs as council members. And over the years, as you know, we have scaled back on staffing for the obvious reasons that I will not go into. However, with the limited resources we have, I hope you're not failing in, in providing services to the community. Our staff has always been available, maybe not personally to accompany you, not you personally, but whoever having sessions with the public, but my staff's always been responsive and they've done their best trying to accommodate your needs. But if it's council's direction, that they, they want individual staff to be assigned to council members, we can definitely, as part of our wrap-up session, bring a report with different options and what other municipalities provide, and there's a cost implication to it that is, is my, my concern, and I, I know it is top of mind for you. So if that's council's desire and direction, we'll have to cost it out and see what implication it'll have on the budget, and it's ultimately council's direction.
I'd like to see that.
Any other comments? Thoughts? All right. Okay.
Callers?
Are there any, any callers or anyone from the public? Any cards?
No callers and no cards.
Okay.
If I may, council members, just want to quickly go over the future budget study sessions. Session four will be on Tuesday, May 23 at 9:00 a.m. It will cover quality of life departments as well as infrastructure for public works. There'll be community service and parks, library arts and culture, community development, and public works. Session five, on May 30th, will be relating to fee study and wrap-up items, as well as revenue, potential revenue sources. And Tuesday, June 13th, budget hearing and adoption. With that, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Amen.
Yes, Councilmember Devine?
I'd just like to give kudos to those that presented today for their departments. Good job. I know that it's not easy to come up here, but you managed to answer all of our questions very well, and thank you so much. Good job.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
I'll second.
Thank you.